Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, May 5th, 2014. Happy Cinso de Mayo to everyone. Welcome to our council meeting. I will start things off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Walter, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Walter. Okay, next is a proclamation, this Public Service Recognition Week proclamation I'm going to give here. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at federal, state, county, and city levels, and whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths, and whereas public employees of the city of Moscow are committed to professional excellence and customer service, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in the service to the people of the United States and around the world, and whereas public servants includes teachers, doctors, and scientists, train conductors and astronauts, nurses and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless of other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity, and whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And whereas the city of Moscow recognizes the generous contributions of time and talent by public employees and community volunteers, and the importance of services they render, now therefore, I, Mayor Lambert, mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th, 2014, as Public Service Recognition Week. In the city, and we encourage all citizens to acknowledge the accomplishments and contributions of public employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Gary, would you please come up so I can present this?
Well, this is for everybody, Gary. Gary's a good guy, but I just want to get...
Can we photo bomb? Photo bomb.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we amend tonight's consent agenda for two items, that we pull item one I, with the reason being that there's a new contract contemplated under that item. That would have been the state/ local agreement on the middle schools SR2S safety improvements, a Moscow grant award, that we pull that one, and that we add an item one J for the Idaho Americans with Disabilities Act pedestrian curb grant program on the basis that staff was directed at the last committee meeting to include that on the consent agenda, and they inadvertently, hard to believe, left it off.
Wow.
Kudos on one hand and a pat on the back on the other.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion by Walter to amend the consent agenda, and a second by Dan. We'll start to roll with Art. Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, and that consent agenda is moved, so that we have removed I and we have replaced J. Dan?
Well, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and pass the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Dan to approve the consent agenda as amended, second by Wayne Kraus. We'll start with a roll from John.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that is done, so we will move on to the next order of business. Did we approve the minutes?
They're in the consent agenda.
Okay. Number, let's see the...
On number two.
Yeah, number two. I was confused here for a minute. Public comment and mayor's response period, we open this app for 15 minutes for folks if they'd like to get up and say anything, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda or coming before planning and zoning or the board of adjustments, they got a few minutes and can come up and say something at the podium. Please state your name and your address, please.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lilly. So, we've got good weather, and people are starting to ask me about the Pocket Park, Ottenas Pocket Park. I can answer these questions, or at least two of the three, but they want to hear from you, so I guess they're watching either on their computer or on TV, and they want to hear you answer the questions. So they said, please get up and ask. So you're still doing our Pocket Park, correct?
I'll defer to Gary, our city supervisor.
Ottenas Pocket Park.
Yes.
Yep, and you're not going to take any money away from the park to do the ball fields, because that's all coming out of Hamilton, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the other question was, with the big push on the ball fields, are we going to get park work done this summer?
Park work's done every summer.
Well, developing these parks, like the Pocket Park.
Would you like me to respond?
Sure, please, Gary.
Yeah, we have no, we have no plans to divert any funding from the general fund or the Parks and Rec Fund toward the Joseph Street playfields. Those will be constructed with Hamilton funds, which weren't used to develop any specific recreational park, other park.
Okay, so everybody's happy then, they're happy to see the park, they want to see it coming.
Thank you, Victoria, and we're excited about having the ball fields finally coming about, and this construction on that will start this summer, so we're looking forward to that. It's going to be an exciting process. Okay, others, if they'd like to come up? Seeing nobody rush to the podium, I'll go ahead and close the public comment, and we will go with the citizen commission reports. This is Human Rights Commission Chief David Duke. Sir, if you would approach the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just, tonight is our annual report for the Human Rights Commission to give you an update on what the events have been and proposed. Before I introduce the Chair, Ken Fontz, I just want to put a plug into those that are listening. We currently have four vacant positions, so if you're interested in joining the Human Rights Commission, please go to the city's website, and we will accept any applications as the mayor will vet all those through him. So we're currently seeking people interested in joining us. I want to invite Ken up at this point.
Turn it over to you, Ken.
All right, thanks, Chief Duke. So, good evening, Mayor Lambert, city council members. We have had a busy, active year this last year, and on the four vacancies, I just want to comment, it does make it easier to get a quorum at the meetings, though. But no, we would prefer to have the extra hands to get things done. So first of all, I wanted to start with the Northwest Coalition for Human Rights. We've been working on this for the last year, and so this is the coalition of human rights groups and individuals interested in human rights that covers five counties in northern Idaho and two counties in eastern Washington. And right now, at this point, we have 21 organizational members and 45 individual members in it, and so we're still growing on that one. We use it for educational purposes and communication, to facilitate communication, so people aren't duplicating efforts, we can help each other for bigger events, that types of things. We are planning a human rights, small convention in October that we're in the process of doing. It will be held in Spokane, and the Moscow Human Rights Commission is seated, we have a seat on the executive committee to run the coalition, and we actually have the president's position, because I'm president of the committee, so that gives us quite a bit of clout in the organization, right at this time, anyway, for the next four years, because that's my term. So, but we're active, we're hoping to hold some more educational conferences and so forth as we get this up and running better. This last year, we held again the Ismat Manan Sheik Community Unity Award at the 1912 Center, and the award this time went to Carla Kepler for her years of work in human rights in Leita County and in Moscow and the community, and so we had a nice turnout, it was a beautiful event, she was completely surprised, they kept it completely secret from her. She actually wasn't feeling well that night, but they convinced her to come anyway, and she was grumbling about it until she got there and then ended up winning the award. So it was quite a surprise that we were able to get her out of the house and come, because she had a cold. Oops. There we go. We also combined with the University of Idaho Women's Center to screen the Girl Rising film about girls' education around the world. It was sold out, packed house at the Kenworthy with 330 people in attendance for the film, and we had to turn people away, so it was a, about three weeks later shown again. Another group brought it in because we had to turn away so many people at it, and so it was an extremely well-attended group, and we partnered with the University of Idaho on that one. We then later would have a social justice forum to follow up the discussion from the film that was held here in October of last year, and we had an excellent panel and a wonderful discussion on the importance of educating girls all over the world and here as well, some of the issues that come up with that, and so it was a really interesting discussion. And I got to admit personally, I was moderating it, but I actually didn't want it to end because the conversation was so good, but it was getting closer to nine, and so we had to wrap it up. But we had some, you know, we more or less had to chase people out of that one because they kept wanting to talk about it. We also held a educational forum on the anti-discrimination ordinance dealing with sexual orientation and gender identity and expression. That was a well-turned-out crowd, and there were quite a few questions and discussion that resulted from that as well. We mainly did this one just to inform the public a little bit more of what this ordinance meant, what was going on with it, the background of it, those types of things. We partnered with the Leita Human Rights County Task Force again for the Martin Luther King Human Rights Breakfast, and it was a wonderful turnout at that and quite successful, and I know several of you were in attendance. So we had great music at that one with Simba and friends, and then interim President Dean Burnett did a nice talk, the mayor gave the awards for the art and essay contest, and so our usual good turnout. The Leita County Human Rights Task Force does a wonderful job in setting this up every year, lots of volunteers from all over, and we're very happy to partner with them on that. And then our Les Purse, who gave an interesting talk and played a few songs while he was at home and we were there, so that was real interesting. We then would hold in March a poster presentation and talk on Coming Face to Face with Hate: A Search for a World Beyond Hate. What this is about was a new poster presentation that was put together by the Kootenay County Task Force on the demise of the Aryan Nations and their compound up in Hayden Lake and the grassroots campaign to get rid of it. And they had put together a wonderful poster display that, on the talk, and here's an example of one of them, that in order to educate the public on who the Aryan Nations were, the campaign, grassroots campaign to stop hate, what ended up happening to them. And they ended up with, as part of the lawsuit, they were donated all of the material that the Aryan Nations compound had, so all their photographs and archives, that they then archived, some of it rather disturbing stuff, that was in, but some of it is shown in these posters. We're bringing this, this was a really good turnout, and we're bringing it back for a stint at the high school, so we're going to do one at the high school, and then we're going to do another one at the University of Idaho, because we had a lot of community members at this one, but we only had about five high school students and about that many university students, and so we want to bring it to them so that more of them know about what happened up there, what was going on, and that these grassroots campaigns can make a difference to stop the spread of hate. And here is Tony Stewart speaking at it. We also co-sponsored this talk on the fight for women's right to vote in April at the University of Idaho campus. We've been doing a lot of partnering with various organizations, including the University of Idaho. It saves money that way if we, you know, split the cost, kind of idea. And then, of course, in April, we had our, what was it, 8th, I believe, Moscow Community Walk, which was a pretty good turnout, and Mayor Lambert read a proclamation at it. Bruce Pittman was there representing the university, UI President Staven could not attend, he had, he was already booked up. I made the mistake of being polite and waiting till he actually got here before requesting his time, and I didn't realize that people already had him booked up the minute after he was hired. He had been booked up for quite a while, and I learned not to be polite about this thing and just jump in there too, or you don't get them. But Bruce Pittman did a wonderful job as part of it all, and Mary Beth Staven, the UI President's wife, did attend with us and walk with us. And so we had dancers, the Mary Missives of Moscow from Moscow Charter School, ended up dancing for us, then we had belly dancers at the square, which were a big hit. By the way, Gazi loves the belly dancers, because Gazi, Gazanfar flew in especially for the community walk, because he was so instrumental in creating it, he didn't want to miss it, and so he flew in that weekend so that he could attend it, and so that was great. And so here we are, moving towards the park. The marimba group entertained us on stage, we had a nice lunch, and then bookmark contest winners were awarded. And the bookmarks, I think most of them are probably gone now, the four winners, we reproduced and gave out free copies to all the school libraries, the public library and book people, but they tend to go fairly quickly. The display of all of the bookmark entries is at book people, so I recommend people stopping in to take a look at it. We had some wonderful entries from kindergarten through fifth graders that entered the contest, and so there was some really, really nice stuff. It made it a hard decision to pick the winners. The winners were awarded $25 gift certificate to book people, which they donated to us, so they donated the runner-up prizes and the winners' prizes. We did, this year, we did a tree with leaves on it, and everyone that was at the park would put what basically roots them to the community, how they're connected to the community to fill up this tree. And then we had a pretty good turnout considering it was freezing that morning, and so we had about 260 or so, 270 people that showed up, walked with us, and ate with us, even though it was, it was rather chilly, but it wasn't raining, so we were happy about that one, because it rained the day before. All right, and that brings us back to this one. Now, what we're also planning for the upcoming year, we are partnering with the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission to put together a social justice forum on renters' rights and these types of things. The syringa issue that was happening brought this up, that we decided to work together and bring some type of educational informational event to the public. What that exactly is, we're not sure yet, because it's still in the planning stages. It may be some speakers, it may be an informational fair-type thing where lots of different groups will be present, showing different information on renting, that type of thing. We are also bringing in here soon a multimedia music presentation dealing with LGBT issues seen through music, and so that we're working on to bring that one in, and it's supposed to be quite the show of taking, from Stonewall to the present, taking a look at music and the LGBT community, so we're planning on that one, and then continuing to grow the Northwest Coalition for Human Rights. Those are the things that are kind of on the agenda for the next coming few months, anyway. And so, I guess, any questions?
Well, Ken, thank you for your leadership, of course, on this commission and the rest of the commissioners that do this work with you as well. And I just got to say, like, April 26th, last Saturday, when we did that, that past Saturday, that community walk was very, very exciting, and it was attended by a number of people, as you said, well over 200, 260, I believe, is what you said, and that was a fun day and a fun event. And Gazi Gazanfar, and I go back 30 years with Gazi, because he, one of his sons went to school, my oldest boy, all the way through grade school and high school, so I've known the Gazanfars for many, many years, and it was really a treat to see him and his wife here for that event, and so I'm hoping he can come to it next year, but...
Yeah, that's his plan, as long as he can get on an airplane and get here, he doesn't want to miss a community walk.
Absolutely, that's terrific, because he was the one that started it and originated it, like you said. Questions for Ken, from the council?
No, great work. I'm excited to see all the things that we're involved in.
And out there in TV land, we need four applicants to come in and help fill us up. I know what it's like to be on a commission, you have a limited amount of people to make a quorum so you can make things happen, so I'm very interested and looking for applications on that, Ken.
Yeah, we would love more members, it makes the work easier when we have more people to take it on, we get fresh ideas, you know, all of that's great.
Absolutely.
And, and just not, so people aren't scared, I run a really quick, tight meeting, we don't waste time, so you're not in there forever. That's very true. Yeah, we all, we're all busy, we don't want to waste time, so...
Oh, sure. Well, thank you very much for your service and your good work on it, Ken.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, next on our agenda is the 1912 Center Quarterly Report, and this will have Dwight Curtis and Jenny Kostroff. Hi, Jenny, how are you?
I should just leave this up, most of it's about the 1912 Center.
There's pictures of it, though. There, there's one.
Yeah. Okay, hi, I'm Dwight Curtis, Parks and Recreation Director. As you, as you know, back in 2007, we turned management and operations responsibilities of the 1912 Center over to the Heart of the Arts, and staff meets with them regularly, and they also report to the council annually and quarterly, and tonight's, we have Jenny Kostroff, she's the Executive Director of Heart of the Arts, she's here to give you a report. This is quarterly, and it's since February, and so here's Jenny.
Hello, esteemed council and mayor. This is so fun. I have a good time doing this every time I get to be here, so...
Oh, we enjoy it as well, Jenny.
I brought all my mail, and I forgot to go to the post office first, I'm going to set it down. Okay, so, let's see, let's talk. The east exterior renovation, that is our next construction project, and it's very exciting. If you pull into the parking lot off of Amburin, you will see that side of the facility has 22 windows that need to be replaced, as well as all the brick is, got nice calcification from water runoff and all kinds of stuff that needs to be cleaned off, and the top cornice along the top is all rusted, it's a steel piece that is, needs to be resurfaced, so that's going to get resurfacing, and so all the bricks will be cleaned and sealed, the new windows will go in, we'll remove the counterweights, and into those empty holes we'll get lots of nice filling, and so all of that project is ready to go. We've got all the plans and everything, we are about $20,000 shy of being able to go out to bid. So, we had a very successful, I'm jumping ahead, we did, in terms of our cornerstone club, we had a very successful Idaho Gives Day online, it was a day of giving online on May 1st? Yes, May 1st? Sorry, the days are starting to blend. And we actually got a grant for $1,000 out of the donations that people made, we had the third highest number of donors in our category, and that won us $1,000 in additional funds, which is very cool, and everybody that participated, thank you, thank you, thank you, because there were a lot of you in this room who were a part of that. And so, that extra $1,000 and the $5,000 that we raised that day online is all going against that $20,000 that we have left, so we're getting closer to striking distance, like about $15,000 away from being able to go out to bid. I've got some magic number in my head, I have no idea what they're going to come back with when we actually do go out to bid, but we're ready to go. So hopefully, in the next few weeks here, we'll be putting those advertisements out and getting the project lined up, and we'll have dates for that, but the goal is end of the summer, starting into the fall, to get the project done, it'll go fairly efficiently. The goal is before the cold season hits again, because our cold season is so long that we can only do so much in a summer. So that's our east exterior restoration project, and if anyone has any questions about that, or if would like to donate a window for $1,912, and yes, that number is on purpose, $1,912, you get a beautiful plaque that will be on your window for the life of the building, and we do have windows in those 22 that need to be adopted. We're getting our tax return put together, Hayden and Ross, public accountants, will be doing that for us this year, as well as a financial review. We will not be doing an audit this year, because we're not working with grant funds that require that. If we were to need to be working with grant funds that require that this year, we would happily submit to an audit, because we have no problem with that, it's just expensive, and I'd much rather put the money into construction this year if we could do that instead. Building maintenance, we will be closing the 1912 Center from Monday, June 30th to Monday, July 7th, so don't plan to have any parties with us during that week. We always close the building, because the smell of the floor refinishing is really strong while it's curing, and we don't want anyone in the senior center getting lightheaded and not feeling good. So, we close the center down and do all kinds of maintenance projects, clean the carpets, get things touched up paint-wise, make it look beautiful, so any event that happens in the rest of July, hot dog, that's a beautiful building, and you're going to have a good time. So, schedule those events after the 7th of July. We also, let's see, we've been working on our grass in the front, so if you've been watching that, the grass is going to be getting better, so, you know, give us a break on the dandelion problem, we're figuring it all out, the grass is going to be in better shape soon. And the shades in the great room are finally operational again, so those of you that like the windows wide open, you can now remove the shades, and if you like the dark for your slide shows, you can drop the shades down again. Very exciting. Currently on the walls in the 1912 Center, we have a student art show, it's a combination of students from the Moscow Middle School, as well as students from the Paradise Creek Regional High School. They'll be having their official art opening for that event, as well as other schools in the district will be participating in that event on Friday, May 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00. So come on by and support the students who made beautiful pieces of art in their art classes this year, and the Paradise Creek Regional High School pieces will be available for sale. The money that they get from those sales goes into their art program, so it's a really nice way to contribute to what the kids are doing. And this summer, we have a very exciting 10th anniversary season of our plaza concerts. So 10 years ago, Linda Paul got the idea to do free plaza concerts on the plaza of the 1912 Center to friendraise, to bring people down to the building, and at that time, the plaza was new, and people really weren't using the 1912 Center, and it was a really great way to have music draw people in off the street, they could enjoy the music, then they might look inside and see what the building had going on in it, and at that point in time, we were still educating people that the great room had been renovated and that the senior center and the Friendship Hall were open. So now, 10 years later, we're still doing the plaza concerts, and this is a special season, because we've been doing this for 10 years, the free concerts are great for family in the community to come out, bring a picnic dinner, the plaza will be open and available for people to come and have their dinner. At 5:30, we'll be selling beer and wine, so those that would like to have beer and wine with their dinner, they can buy that from us, and then at 6:30, the music will begin. The only concerts that will be in the great room instead of on the plaza are the, I say, provided there's no rain, because rain brings the concerts inside, but the cello concerts, there's two evenings, we're actually doing a Monday, Tuesday, because Isaac Pastor Chirmac, who plays fantastic cello, will be doing all of box suites, it's the cello suites, and there are a lot, there are six of them, so he's going to be playing all of the solo cello suites, and so it's a two-night event, but definitely worth hearing, he's quite a talented performer, but that will be in June, June 23rd and 24th. All of the dates for our plaza concerts are online, so you can go to 1912center.org if you're at home and you want to see when these... And there are a lot, there are six of them, so he's going to be playing all of the solo cello suites. And so it's a two night event, but definitely worth hearing. He's, he's quite a talented performer. But that will be in June, June 23rd and 24th. All of the dates for our plaza concerts are online, so you can go to 1912center.org if you're at home and you want to see when these plaza concerts are, because they're free. And it's a great time to bring picnic out and have, and kids can dance to the ones that are appropriate for dancing, like the, we have the Community Band of the Palouse. They are very danceable. And my kids seem to always dance. I seem to get sucked into dancing with them, so it's pretty entertaining. And then that's pretty much my, my quick and dirty summary, and for me, that's pretty fast. So any questions that you might like to ask?
Thank you, Jenny, for that good report and that enthusiasm that you always show. We love that.
I love this building. It's a real pleasure. Today, I actually took, the high school has a class that's meeting in the arts workshop. It's Carley Bean's history, American history classes. And so we took those classes upstairs to tour the upper floors. And the kids were like, wow, what is this? They had no idea, because we work in just one third of the building all the time. And they were highly impressed and they said, oh, now we get why you're so excited about this place. I said, yeah, there's a lot up here. And on the last, so everybody knows here, on the last plaza concert of the season in August, we'll have the upper floors open for tours, so that you can then take a tour upstairs and see what else is up there. We have to do a little bit of cleaning up there before we take you up there, so that's why we're doing it in August as the last one.
Counsel, may questions for Jenny?
Question. Wayne? Jenny, this is east side of the exterior wall to do this. Is that the last one?
Nope, we've got the southern side. It's the largest side along the front, along Third Street that's still left. That has a lot more windows and it's got a lot more balustrade work. Well, I shouldn't say that. It's equal to what we're doing in this project. The balustrade will be repaired on the west end of the facility, because it never was put on, as well as on the east end. So we'll be doing two more balustrades in that southern side. But as a part of this, Wayne, we're actually going to be, in our bid project, we're going to be getting a number for the south side as an ad alternate. In the event that that price point comes in, or we have a donation come in, that we could actually accept that, we can then go into construction on that side. But that will give us a really great number for fundraising purposes, to know where we need to be at to go out to bid a second time for that side. The potential is there that, last time when we did the exterior work, we started on the west end of the facility and moved around to the north. That was a one bid with talisman construction out of Spokane, and they held their bid price for the north side of the facility for us. And so they finished the west end of the facility and said, are you ready to accept our, our northern side cost? And we said, yes. So then we were able to go ahead and continue construction. So the same thing could happen this time, and that's why we're bidding it out. But the nice part is we'll have the dollar amount to know what that cost will be, so that even if we're not able to accept it at this time, or they don't hold that price, we'll have a good target number for fundraising.
One last. Then I assume, once you're done with your exterior, then you'll be moving to the second and third floors.
Very excited about that, yes.
Oh, you are.
Because, I mean, you've toured it. It's, it's really, really neat up there, and there's a lot of great potential spaces for our community. And I'm really excited to get them open and operational and get the folks that, I mean, we have need for space in town even still, and spaces that were available to the public close and change. And, and so it is something that we know the community needs in the spaces upstairs. We are working as a board to sort of identify what the uses of those spaces will be, even if it's just narrowing it down to three ideas for each of the spaces, so that we can then really hone in our construction plan for upstairs.
Okay, good.
Other question. Tom?
Thank you. So to summarize, 20,000 bucks more, and then you can put it out the bid.
Yeah, I mean, I.
And I imagine the earlier you put out the bid, the better chances you have of getting a better price.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm probably going to jump the gun a little bit, because I'm very confident that we'll be able to fundraise that last portion. But the, the goal is, for Heart of the Arts, we never want to, we don't have a credit card. We don't go into debt. We work on cash basis only, so when we have the funds in hand, we go out to bid. And the logic behind that is that we're able to pay the entire cost and it's done. So I'm always careful about going out to bid too soon, because you don't want to be in a situation where the last bill comes to you and you can't pay it. But we have had really great success with having that be the motivation behind the last fundraising push. So if it's like 20,000 and we go out to bid now and we're like, we got to get it, folks, help us, our community really does step up. So it's really, I, I have a feeling we'll probably go out to bid no matter what to the end of this month, because that way we're in somebody's timetable for construction in the right time.
And if people want to help, they can give cash or, or a pledge or something like that.
Yeah, we can, we can do. We've got a couple of folks who do regular credit card donations on a monthly basis, and they're working to buy windows. You can sponsor a window over time, which is really great for folks that want to eventually have a plaque on one of the windows in the upper floors, because it's going to take us a while to get those upper floors renovated when we can install the plaque. So there are folks that do contributions on a monthly basis or annual basis towards a window. So if there's someone that's like, I've always wanted to adopt a window, I'd be thrilled to get that set up with them. They can pick out their windows so they know which one they're adopting, and we'll get them started.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jenny, very much. Thanks for the fine report.
Thanks.
Okay, folks, we're going to move on to item number five, Americans with Disability Act Transition Plan Pedestrian Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way. And this will be Lisa Anderson and Gary is part of this as well, but Lisa will present. Good evening.
Just the eye candy.
Okay.
Lisa will be carrying the mail on this.
She will be carrying the torch on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks like my document didn't get opened here, so I'm going to need to cheater down here real quick. There's only one left open down there.
It just wasn't open yet.
Okay.
Is that in there? And minimize that.
Oh, it was on the desktop?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was down here. Okay. It's really hard when you're short and you can't see the top of the screen here. I'm getting a really big glare, sorry.
Five?
Okay. Jeez. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm sure that you're probably glad that this will be the last time you will see this document. It will still be coming before you, as we update it, but I've been working on this for 18 months now. So I'm very excited to receive your blessing to move forward on it tonight and to actually implement the plan and put it into place. So I thought it only fitting that I prepare a little PowerPoint for you. As I said, we've been working on this plan for 18 months. It's a transition plan for pedestrian facilities in the public right of way, and this is just telling you what the regulations are. It falls under Title II, Article 8. And there are certain items that have to be within that plan in order for it to meet all the requirements. We've discussed these with you many times, but I'm going to break this down into kind of three little sections that we've went through as we've developed the plan. Little bit of history and overview, the data that we've collected, and then the legal requirements, and then actually putting it into effect through implementation. Okay, this document was written through a collaboration of the Administration Department and also Public Works Department. And the purpose, as you know, is to assure that all of our facilities in the public right of way are listed and that we're on a path to make them ADA compliant, especially for those people with disabilities. And so we've been basically working on this process for several years, but we did not have an official written plan. In the plan, we have identified barriers and we are prioritizing the improvements and a process that will take us through long-term commitment through an evaluation process to bring us into compliance. That could take several years, but it will always be a goal that we'll be working toward. The plan has some new policies that we developed throughout the process, and then we've also enhanced some of the programs that were already in place. And one of the key projects that you'll probably see that we're going on right now out there is, I call classic construction, is putting in pedestrian curb ramps throughout town. Started, I think, last Thursday or Friday. So since 2012, from 2000 to 2012, we have put in 84,000 linear feet of sidewalk, 4,100 linear feet of pathway, and 400 pedestrian ramps. And we have some larger numbers too since then, but I didn't put everything up on the slide. I just thought that was a good one for the public to know how hard we've been working to bring things into compliance. There are two different types of evaluations in the document. And the preliminary evaluation is a visual or an aerial view, or what the engineering department call a cognizant review, of just looking at a pedestrian curb ramp or a sidewalk and knowing that it's not compliant. Then it moves forward onto the detailed evaluation list. So everything that we've done since is now on a final list, and we'll go through a process of continuing these evaluations through 2017 for preliminary, and then we'll move forward. It'll take us probably till 2022 to complete the full evaluation. Oops. What did I do?
You killed it.
There we go. This doesn't like me. We have collected a lot of data, and we've had three public meetings. The plan itself was on the website for 120-plus days. So if anyone has public comment now, it's too late. We're not taking it down. And I will say.
I hope nobody arrived and read all this evening to comment on this one.
I received a councilman's steeds blessing last week, so I knew that there probably was nothing else left to say. This is kind of a, a number that we have put together. Engineering actually developed this number. If we were to complete all of our compliance work, it would be $24,305,000. Those are 2013 estimates, and as we move forward, we anticipate an inflation increase of 3% to 5%. And I just want to make note here that that's not something the city's ever going to be able to afford for many, many years. But the, the purpose of the plan is that we continue to work toward this. And if we have a citizen who lives in a certain area and they need accessibility that they don't have, we work through the prioritization process and the valuation criteria. But no matter what, we'll do the best we can to make accommodation for whoever needs it, whether it be we assist in public transportation, or we help find an alternate route. There's always going to be problems in the winter and we're aware of those. And in fact, throughout the public comment process, we really had no requests for changes in the plan. It was basically people sharing about the difficulties they have during the bad weather getting around town. But, but a lot of them aren't aware of some of the different programs we have available. And so we've been able to help most everyone that has brought anything forth to us. Previously, last July, we named our ADA coordinator, which is our city clerk, Stephanie Claus, and we adopted a grievance complaint procedure. In order to move forward, I, when we looked and researched into this, we wanted to be able to have a method that someone could make a request to us that wasn't in the form of a grievance or a complaint, just that they were requesting accommodation. So we have a form that's also available for the public to use, and it's called a Request for Reasonable Accommodation. And if, you know, if somebody that's having a problem getting around, there's a sidewalk missing, or whatever it might be, this form will be available on our website, and we encourage people to use that. And we would really like to be able to resolve any issues through this process, rather than having to go through a complaint or a grievance procedure. So tonight, we bring forth to you a new resolution, new resolution that adopts the ADA 2010 Standards for Accessible Design. Federal highways has not approved their final draft of this, so we're actually adopting their draft version. We were hoping that it would be ready by now, but it's not. So that is one of the resolutions that you saw in your packet tonight. And then, once we have that resolution adopted, we can go ahead and move forward with adoption of this plan itself. And as I discussed with the council and committee last week, it will be a living document. I'm already aware that we have some updates to make to it, but I wanted to go ahead and get this part done. We'll be evaluating the public transit bus stop locations. We have some things that we need to put on our list there. And so we're moving forward tonight. And I just wanted to remind the council that, and the public also, that we'll make any reasonable effort to improve accessibility for anybody that needs it, regardless of why or where, we'll do what we can to help them. There's going to be times, though, when we won't be able to make it perfect. Sixth Street Hill is a good example of that. There's no way that we're ever going to be able to make Sixth Street Hill any different because of the topography. We can do our best, but we can assist people in finding a different route, or provide public transit, do something to get them where they need to be. So there's always a way to do it, and I know that our council members are always supportive of staff and helping the citizens get their needs met through accommodations. So that will be the plan that we will work with as we implement and move forward with this.
And Alyssa had mentioned, this is a work in process. It's going to be a period of time, it's going to take us a while, it's going to be an ongoing event that we're going to be working on. But we're going to be diligently working on it as we can go and as we can afford it and to make things right, correct? I mean, that's how we're headed.
Exactly. And, you know, I think at this point, we'll probably, you'll see it come back to you probably every two years, we'll have enough updates. But the, we'll continue to keep the lists of projects updated for, you know, things that have grant funding that we know are coming in the next two to three years. We have projects usually from Idaho Transportation Department that are scheduled for funding three years out. So those will be on our list, and, and someone may have a question about a certain location, and we know that, you know, we have funding to improve that area coming up. And so we'll continually update those lists and the, the project schedules.
Okay. Tom, this was on the administrative committee.
It was. We reviewed it and unanimously moved it on forward. I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Well, before you do that, I wanted to ask Dan, because he was in Public Works and Finance chaired that, so.
Yeah, we had the same thing, as we went ahead and unanimously approved it. Like Alyssa said, this is an evolving document, and as she mentioned, we've seen it several times, and still it's the draft form, and we'll see a final one at some point that we'll need to update again. So, I mean, it's, what this is, is it, we have to do this to, in order to stay eligible for, you know, ITD and federal grants. So, you know, whatever we have to do to, to keep that going, we'll keep going.
Tom, you got the floor.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ADA 2010 Standards for Accessible Design and the July 26, 2011 draft version of the ADA Proposed Accessibility Guidelines for Pedestrian Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way through approval and execution of Resolution 2014-09 on Exhibit C, Page C11 of the transition plan that's attached within our packet.
Tom made the motion for, to adopt A. You got that, Stephanie, word for word. And then John Weber seconded. Any discussion before I call for a roll? I'll start with you, Arthur.
Aye.
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 Okay, Resolution A, Resolution 2014-08, Exhibit C, Page C11 of the attached transition plan is what we just approved. So we'll move on.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Dan?
That we adopt the Americans with Disability Act Transition Plan for Pedestrian Facilities in the Public Right-of-Way, approving the next resolution, which is the next page of our document there. And I guess that would be 2014-10.
I'd second that.
Okay, Dan made a motion for, to adopt the American Disability Act. It is number B on our agenda here for everybody. And Tom seconded that motion. And Tom's seconding that motion. Discussion before I call for a roll. I will start with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, so we just passed Resolution Number 2014-10, Exhibit C, Page C12 and 13 of the attached transition plan. Do you have that, Stephanie?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And once we get $24 million, we've got a plan to-
Just an easy thing.
Gary?
Your Honor, I just want to acknowledge all the work that Alyssa's done on this. You know, it was something that typically your grants manager wouldn't be tasked with, but she knew more about it than the rest of us did, so, and did a great job over the last 18 months putting this together. It's obviously a huge undertaking, and with Stephanie's help as being our ADA coordinator, we should move ahead in a pretty healthy fashion.
Very good.
Way to go. Thanks.
Thank you, Alyssa.
I won't do my happy dance for you right now, but I'm doing it inside.
Okay, folks, now we got a number of people here, so we're going to move on to Item 6. And I got a feeling that's why we have a whole crowded room here, because folks usually just doesn't want to come up and see our smiling faces up here. So I'm going to turn this over. It's an off-leash area proposal, Mountain View Park Ordinance Amendment for Title 10, Chapter 5 leash law. Dwight, you have the podium, sir.
All righty, thank you.
Before you get started, too, I want to tell folks, this isn't a public meeting, folks, or a public hearing, but I do plan on taking testimony from people as we're going along here once we get done. So, you've been all patiently waiting here, so I'm going to give you a chance to voice what you've got. Dwight?
All right, thank you. When we put together the Parks and Recreation Master Plan 2013, one of the items in that document was for staff to explore feasibility of other park properties that the city has for off-leash purposes, something as an alternative to the dog park. And we weren't quite at that point yet, but we were approached by a group of citizens, whom most are here tonight, to explore the possibility of using Mountain View Park. And it came with a proposal, their proposal, which was in your packet. This took place back in February. Staff reviewed this, reviewed their proposal, assessed the park, the conditions, the surrounding area, as well as we worked through the police chief and the legal office. And staff came up with the recommendation to, to basically turn this park into an off-leash area. And on your, on the slide presentation here, the existing ordinance states that no owner or keeper of any dog shall allow or let such dog to run or remain at large within the city at any time. And this is any place in the city, on city properties, well, I think in the city, without, except for the dog park. And so, anytime you're in a public park, or in the pathways, anything like that, they have to be leashed. The proposed changes that we came up with was that the field area of Mountain View Park is an off-leash area at all time, except when there's city activities on the field or when the, when the fields are closed, and that's posted closed. And all the other city rules apply per city code. On this slide, you can see this, within the red boundaries is where the dog off-leash area would be. Existing right now is fencing along the eastern side, and that is it. The rest is bordered by Paradise Creek. And that is not a fence for dogs, it's just a creek. So we just, we just pick the boundaries there. This proposal is for this area only, so the rest of the park, or where the playground and the shelter, parking lots, next year's horseshoe pit courts, that I'm sure you'll approve in the budget. Can I throw that in there now? Anyway-
Dwight, stick with the dog leash thing. We'll deal with the horseshoe pits down the way.
All right, all right. Yeah, I had to throw it in there. Anyway, these areas will still be leash only. Little hard to read, but you have to have some general rules for everybody. Most of this is common sense, etiquette rules, and these would be posted at the park as well, in, in locations that would be, for anybody that would be going into the off-leash area. It basically states that any handler or the dog owners would be responsible for their dog's behavior and any injuries that their dogs may cause. By entering the off-leash area, the owners are, enter at their own risk, can agree to abide by all the rules. They must be on a leash until they're in the field area. They're never allowed, they may never leave the off-leash area without their dogs. We also encourage, within that same one, for folks that are there and see violations, to contact the city so we can get that fixed. The owners are required to carry the equipment necessary to clean up after their dogs. Some of these are things that are already in effect anyway throughout the city. Dog owners must carry a leash at all times, whether their dogs are on a leash or not. All off-leash dogs are under, must be under the voice control, which is different than the dog park, for example. It's fenced in. Folks can let their dogs off the leash, and they can go sit down and the dogs go play. Here, they, they have to be actively working with their dogs. They have to be able to, the dogs must be under voice control. Aggressive dogs are not permitted on the premises and must be removed at the first sign of aggression. We have the same rule at the dog park. All dogs must be licensed, vaccinated. Dogs younger than four months of age are not permitted off-leash, in the off-leash area. And dogs in heat are not permitted in the off-leash area. As I said before, this is just for this park and this part of the park, and not for any other city property, and it is addressed in the, the master plan. Part of tonight's request is also to change the ordinance so that it reflects these changes if you approve it. And you can see here, we had the definitions of a dog park, the handler, and off-leash areas. And, let's see, on the dog-at-large, we, we had it listed as just a dog park, but we added in the off-leash area. And then, on the off-leash area limitations, we already talked about this, but aggressive dogs are not allowed, and dogs outside the permitted boundaries who are not on a leash shall be considered dogs-at-large. And the leash law is in effect during times when the fields are in use by Parks and Rec. Programs, or when the field is posted closed. And in a nutshell, that's what I have. Since we originally came up with this, this was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission at their April meeting and recommended for approval. This was also presented to the administrative committee last week and recommended for approval. There has been a lot of discussion since last Monday, and so, I'm sure the councils had an earful of that. But that's where we're at tonight. I think, I don't know if anybody has an invalid point on either side of the issue. I think in this particular case, what's being asked for is to give them a shot, see if it works, make them prove that it doesn't work, and, and if it doesn't work, then we'll change it back. There are other cities that have this, and, and they get along just fine. There was some discussion by some citizens about possibly fencing this as well, and, well, that basically turns it into a real dog park, and that is not what the intention of this was. And, but that was still an option that was discussed. We had some prices on that. Using hogwire fencing, an estimate, it was done in-house on short notice, we came up with $9,500 in chain link from a commercial vendor quoted it at $8,200. So, I'm guessing either they were low, or the hogwire estimate done in-house was a little high, but somewhere in that general area is about what it would cost to finish fencing that off. But that, I'll repeat, that is not what our intention was here. So, with that, I'm open for questions or-
Okay, I'd ask council if they got questions for Dwight before I open it up to public comment. Walter?
Dwight, what's the downside of the proposal?
Well, first off, I mean, you have, I mean, anytime you have a dog that's off-leash, I mean, you just have, sometimes nature just does its thing. There are some unpredictable things that can happen. I know this, this proposal is, is not for dogs that aren't trained to be under voice control. This is not meant for everybody in town to take their dogs there and let them off-leash. That's not what this is for at all. So if a person has a dog that's trained under voice control, and they're willing to go out and give this a try, then great. If it doesn't work for them, then they should not come back without their dog off the leash. So, there's that. Dogs, friendly dogs love to go up to people that they don't know and be petted, and sometimes that scares people. If there were too many dogs, I suppose a family that might be over at the picnic table could possibly decide maybe they don't want to go out into the field area. Maybe that, maybe that would bother them, I don't know. I've been watching, now granted, it's springtime and the weather hasn't been the greatest, but I have seen families, groups that take their tots over there during the day, and they have gone out and during the lunchtime, lunch hour, and there is a group of people that, and they're probably not in this room, that would have their dogs off-leash there already. And there have been no problems that I've witnessed. And I've gone and sat in the evening times on some of the, the more fair evenings that we've had so far, there haven't been a lot of them, and I just haven't seen any issues. Doesn't mean they can't still happen. That's just, that's part of the deal. You can have some of these same things happen at a dog park, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight. We may call you back in a bit. I'm going to, this is, like I said earlier, this is not a public hearing, but I'm going to open it up for public comment, where I would ask a number of things. Want to limit your remarks to three minutes or less, please, and no repeaters. If you have, if somebody gets up and says the same exact thing that you're going to say, just in the saving time while we go on to somebody else, please. And when you come up, addresses, give us your name and your address, please. So I'm open to let people come to the podium. Step right on up here, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, start with me today. Name's Bill. Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name is Lisa Krabenhoff. My address is 220 Southeast Comicon, Pullman, Washington. Even though I'm a Pullman resident, I've been using Mountain View Park since 2002. I'm also heavily involved with Moscow because I've spent over 3,000 hours training dogs at the shelter, and I'm also a volunteer obedience instructor. So, I teach classes at the Leita County Fairground, and all the proceeds I generate go to the shelter. So even though I live in Pullman, most of my efforts, volunteer efforts occur in Moscow. So, from an obedience instructor's perspective, one thing I did want to bring up is that Moscow, the Mountain View Park works as an off-leash area because the owners have to have excellent control over their dogs, because of the roadway and the fencing and the large field behind the park, because the dogs can get onto the highway. So even for the dog's own safety, it's important for the owner to have good control over their dogs. And the lack of fencing is actually excellent incentive for people to have control over their dogs, and it actually selects for those kind of people that we want out there. It selects for those people that can call their dogs back, that keep their dogs from running up on strangers, that have their dogs play in small groups. And so, actually, I personally think added fencing would, would actually, you know, take away from the safety out there for the dogs and the rest of the people who use the park. Another thing I did want to bring up is that dogs who leave the park boundaries, I think it would be very beneficial if the city would actually enforce the leash laws and, and include fining, because Pullman has zero warning in terms of fining if dogs are off-leash, so people take it very seriously. And in the beginning, when, if this does pass, it's going to help everyone understand that the dogs need to stay within the confines of the boundaries of the park. So I think if we get help from the city for patrolling that and actual fines addressed, I think that's going to help people take it very seriously, because we've been responsibly using the park for a long time, and we want other people to view it that way, too. And so, those are the points I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And her dog I like, because his name is Bill, so that kind of rings a bell, and I like that very much. This is Bill, everybody, right here. Okay, please come up.
Hi, my name's Chakowei, and I've been a resident in Moscow all my life. But I've had two dogs since the park's been open. My little eight-pound miniature dachshund lived for 15 years, and my border collie's now 15 years old, and we've been going to the park every day. I used to go to the park twice a day with my border collie, who, just shown here getting me a misdemeanor. I didn't get a ticket, but that's what we do over there, and that's like most of the dogs that are over there. But I'd like you to know, too, that we've been going to that park with my kids and my dogs ever since the beginning. As a matter of fact, on that plaque out on the bathrooms, my kids' names are on there because we donated two trees and planted them out there. But the one thing I did want to say is that we do pick up all of our poop. As far as dogs-at-large, I've only found one dog in there over my 30 years I've been out there, and I contacted the owner, and he lived on Yeoman Lane, and I took my dog home to him. But that thing about dogs being from there and going out places, I've, I've never witnessed that. But anyway, in Squim, they did a whole bunch of research, and it said that the city is legitimately concerned with delegizing the use of public property for off-leash and creates a risk of liability. The experience of municipality indicates, however, that the risk is minimal. For example, Point Isabel Regional Shoreline is 21 acres off-leash located in Berkeley in Richmond, California. According to Parks Advisor, the park averages 730,000 dog visitors per year. The attorney at East Bay Regional Park District refers to the district, it's had no claims and has not been named in any litigation. And also in Laguna Beach, California, off-leash for two years, no claims. And Sepulveda Dam Basin, which is the largest off-leash area in Los Angeles, also no reports of claims or litigation over dogs. So, I think of the danger of getting sued as minimal. You know, I don't think you can have 730,000 softball players without having a lot of injuries. So, it's my two cents.
Thank you, Jack.
A question, if I may, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you've been using this park as an off-leash area for 30 years?
Mostly with my-
Is that my understanding?
Mostly with my border collie, which is my second dog. But we go out there, we go out into the park. As a matter of fact, I was there Saturday before last. We had kite flyers, we had kids kicking soccer balls, we had a guy playing golf, and we had our dogs, and the only interaction we had is I've got another eight-pound wiener dog, and some of the little kids flying the kite wanted to pet my dog.
So, part of what we're being asked to do is to change the ordinance to fit what's being done out there, is that correct? And I'm not being critical, I'm just-
Yes. And, and I had a conversation with Wayne when they started, because over the period of time, some dog catchers, animal control officers, thought it was okay, if you guys stay away, we're going to let you do that. And Bobby, who used to be out at the parks, he even put in a, a drinking bowl for the dogs and put in a little faucet. So, it's gone from sometimes cracking down on us, and then sometimes we just kind of look the other way because you guys aren't any problem. As a matter of fact, I think we're more stewards of the park. You know, I don't think we're self-policing, I think we're ambassadors of goodwill. I think we do a pretty good job of it. We watch over it. And, you know, I, I filled up the, the bags up there the other day with my plastic bags from shopping, and none of us had out into that park with only one bag, because if there's another poop out there, we want to pick it up so that we don't get in bad graces with, you know, the- bad graces with, you know, the other users of the park. So I think we're pretty good stewards out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Good evening, Mayor Lambert.
Good evening.
Councillors, canine friends, community members. Thank you for letting me address you this evening for this RFP.
Could you give us your name, please, and your address?
My name is Lani McCauley.
Okay.
I live at 1956 Crestview Drive in Moscow. I am new to your area, and I am here on behalf of Room to Rome, barking for our off-leash area at Mountain View Field. There's a couple of things that I had liked to address this evening. Three most important things that I would like to address is, the number one is potential safety concerns surrounding the establishment of the off-leash area proposed at Mountain View Lakefield. The attempts that I'm going to address, most common safety concerns, as well as try to suggest some solutions. After much research, much research, it's one of my favorite things to do, and reviews of hundreds of parks and fields in the United States, there seems to be some common themes. One that's near and dear to most of our businessmen and women and our government officials is always the bottom line of funding. Now, we don't have to worry too much about funding right now. A close second is establishing firm rules that will strictly enforce canine enforcement officials. I've been coming to this park, oh, I would say, six months. I have yet to see an enforcement officer. I do carry my leash, but I, too, am guilty. The last thing, it's, well, the one thing that I want to address is offsetting some costs that may come up, as was spoken. There are some measures that we can use, and I'd be more than willing and happy to do them. Some of the things that can offset are grants. I don't know if many of you know that the very candies that we so much love, like Mars Bars, they are proponents for dog parks, off-leash, and tethered. They offer grants every year, and several of them up to $2,000. I love to write grants. These are for things, for fencing, they are also for things like puddle pools, if necessary. Now, I'm not saying that I want to turn this into a dog park. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying the bottom line of some of the things that we are most worried about right now is purchasing maybe some commercial insurance. They will help us do that. Protecting the city from dog-related claims. Another would be to express assumption of liability and indemnification. That's to compensate for loss or damage, to provide security for financial reimbursement to an individual in case of a specified loss incurred by the person. I'm not sure if you are aware that, in the state of Washington, anyway...
Ms., could you wrap it up, please?
I will.
Thank you.
In the state of Washington, your house insurance does cover some of those costs. I won't talk about the thing that Chuck talked about, the poop law, or the 730,000 dog visitors each year. The only other thing that I want to talk about is the room. While the dog park is one acre, there's 40 acres for our dogs to roam. I think that it's a beautiful park, and it would sustain an off-leash, dogs, people, and other animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. I think you covered it very well.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Tanya Dial. I live at 2704 East D Street. And as you stand at Mountain View Park, my house is up on the hill, Reddigan's house is down below ours. Looking down at the park most every day, there's always dogs running around free and off-leash, which is fine with me. I have encountered at least five times dogs coming up from the park, clear up to my house, hassling my animals. So I haven't complained. I've dealt with this by talking to the people when I drive down to the park and confronting them. Still have had one occasion with the dogs coming up to my home. So I just would like you guys to really think about, with the leash law, what I've already, you know, seeing, and without a leash law. The south end of the park has no fence. So those people who feel they have really kind of a limited control over their dogs walk to that end of the park, because it's away from everybody, away from the highway or the road, and they let their dogs run out into the field or play out there. And they find that they can go farther and farther, and they end up at my house. The neighbor down below will be moving in, he's putting in cattle and sheep and fencing, so there will be livestock next to the park. So that is also something to think about and see what that may cause. And that's my three minutes.
Thank you. Come on up, address yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Danber. I live in 106 South Roosevelt in Moscow. I believe the woman had a legitimate point, however, I don't believe it's the dogs of these people here. It's been my experience that people with hunting dogs have turned their dogs loose out there to chase birds. That's what I've seen in the past. And like I say, it is not these people here that keep their dogs close and under control. So it's a totally different group of people that have created her situation. So that's what I'd like to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, would you take a question from one of our councillors, please?
So how do we do that? Do we enumerate the people here tonight as being the people permitted to take dogs off-leash at the park and tell others that it can't, or how?
Well, we're more of a self-policing group, and hopefully...
And I can appreciate that.
You know, and people going out trying to train hunting dogs, whether you have an ordinance or not, they're gonna take their dogs out and turn them loose. We want to be under the auspices of doing it correctly, and that's what this is all about. You know, and enforcement, if somebody comes out and people go up to her house, you know, I, I can understand why she'd be upset. But like I say, the dogs that I've seen playing out there from these groups, they mostly stay right in a small group, and they're under the control of their owners by voice command. They don't roam freely, they don't cross the creek. Fencing would really be unnecessary because these dogs stay with their owners. And that's what we're proposing and what we hope to see happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a question for Dwight. Go ahead, Mike, sit down. Thank you. Dwight, we earlier in the slide presentation saw 11 rules for people, and those 11 rules will be posted out there, will they not?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So the point I'm trying to make is the rules are not posted out there right now.
Well, actually, the rules are posted there.
The same ones that you have here?
Oh, no, because this isn't the, the law right now.
So the point that I'm trying to make is, if this does in fact go through, those rules will be posted out there.
Yes.
And so that will, should be a way of helping police an issue.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, if I may.
Gary?
Also, if you have an animal that leaves the off-leash area and it roams at large in the city, it's in violation of our current code and the code, even if you amend it tonight. So an owner could be cited if the animal were to leave that area.
Okay, thank you. Let's go, let's take more public comment, you'll have a chance to comment here. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Virginia Rankin, and I live at 312 North Garfield Street. And I think that the, what just was talked about is really important because when we're there in the park and we see someone doing something that's totally wrong, we go up to them and nicely tell them that. But if this were a law, and if we had a sign to point to and say, hey, you're not really following the rules, it would give us more power, and it would give us, it would empower us to be able to keep the park, because that's what our goal is. We want our dogs and other dogs who can behave themselves to have the park. And so I don't think that I have ever had anybody angry at me, but if I'll see a, a dog use the park for the bathroom, and I go over and I say, hey, you know what, I don't think you have a bag for that, and they'll take it, and they'll pick it up. You know, so it's, it's the kind of thing that you can do if you have the city behind you. But otherwise, we're just people who are complaining to them. So I, I really think it's important that we have this pass. And I, I did a little research, and I find that there, in the 2010 census, they found that 47% of people in the United States in households have dogs, one, two, or more. So if we take 47% of the households, the 9,000 households in Moscow, that comes to 4,230 dogs. Now, if you'd only take a quarter of those dogs and on a Sunday afternoon go to the dog park, you'd have on one acre of land 1,057 dogs. And I think we all know that's not working. So we do need more space, and I know that Dwight's group has, Park and Recs have really worked hard and put this on their, on their agenda for the future. But I'm seeing it happen now, and the need is for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lisa Kleeger, and I live at 722 South Lynn, and my daughter works at Safeway. You know her.
That's neat.
Yeah, she does. And I have a little dog, and I tried to take him to the dog park, and he just like, mommy, mommy, I can't go in there because all these big dogs are there. So I took him to Mountain View, this is several years ago. He just loved it, he just ran and never, you know, I could control him and get him to come with me. And I, all, I met these wonderful people out there, and the dogs are very well behaved, they really are. The dogs have gone onto this lady's house. I feel very bad about that. I'm not certain those are the dogs that are in that park, and perhaps maybe there could be some fencing in that one area so dogs couldn't go through that field. Perhaps there could be something like that. But it's a much bigger place, the, the joy, this is, maybe sounds kinda crazy, but the joy the animals get out of being in that park and that the people get from it, you just can't measure that. The dog park isn't big enough. It's very muddy, and it's just, it's just not appropriate for my dog, anyway, and I can't let him run anywhere else in town because it's not legal, and he'll run to the street anyway. So I really do hope that you will consider keeping this off-leash. It was off-leash for many years, and then it's on-leash. And it's really the only place my dog can really enjoy himself in the town. So I'm hoping you'll pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is David Griffith. We live at 1008 South Harrison Street, number two. It's an apartment. And my wife and I own a 10-month-old Australian shepherd named Merrick that most of these folks know quite well. Merrick is extraordinarily friendly. He loves, loves, loves other dogs. And Merrick's, an Australian shepherd is a herding dog. I, I study range plant ecology, I'm a PhD student at the University of Idaho. And I'm from Virginia originally, grew up with, with herding dogs, working dogs, our family owned, hunting dogs as well, as well as pet dogs. And having raised, been raised around herding dogs and working dogs in particular, my wife really wanted an Australian shepherd for a wedding present. And I was not aware at the time that, that Mountain View Park and the off-leash was not legal. You know, I, I kinda was under the impression that, that Moscow is a dog-friendly town. I mean, that's what I'd heard. It was really quite shocking to me to realize, and this was really just a few months ago, that there's not only no off-leash areas in, in the city, there's no off-leash areas in the county. A friend of mine who, who for 25 years was the, I guess, the state shepherd for Idaho, the state experimental herds that were run out of the University of Idaho's animal program over at the university, he's also a stock dog expert. Goes along with sheep and cattle a lot of times in the American West. The Australian shepherd was bred here, Southern Idaho. It's part of the American West. The character of the American West is stock dogs, cowboys in, in stock. And he and I figured out that the closest place that we could go to legally allow our dogs actually off-leash to run with each other, it's about a 35-minute drive, it's BLM land in south of Pullman. It was kind of a surprise to us. So anyways, we, it was part of my calculation in, in getting a sheepdog was the realization for the next couple of years before I finish up and we, you know, are looking for a place where maybe we can afford some land, I thought with the off-leash area at Mountain View that this would be something that we could have, actually, a, a working dog. You know, they need room to run, part of their training, part of keeping them healthy and happy. If you ever want a really miserable household, take a dog like ours and keep it in a two-bedroom apartment 24 hours a day, and you might decide you don't love dogs so much anymore. But, so, you know, anyways, as to the wandering dogs, you know, like my, and, and obviously I'm biased on this front, but I haven't seen that, that much. But I would like to say, leash law or no leash law, there always will be those people that are not going to control their dogs. That happens as much in town as it does out of Mountain View. You know, if you've been walking around this town in the evening, you've met dogs that were off-leash, right? Whether they get out of people's yards, whether people do it intentionally or not. 99% of the time, it's not a problem, right? Startling, but it's, you know, and my point being is I think, from where I've lived elsewhere, the appropriate thing is to regulate the bad behavior, punish the bad behavior, not just assume that all dog owners are allowing bad behavior. So that's it.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you so much for giving us this time. I'm Sandy Billings. I live at 312 North Blaine. And I just want to say that many, many people don't have kids at home, even if they used to be at home, yet even those of us without kids at home support parks and recreation for kids. And one of the reasons we do that is because, among other benefits, we know that exercise and socializing really helps to build good citizens. Well, many of us also have dogs, whether we ever have had or don't have kids. And while they're not kids, they're, they're, they're part of our families, they really are. And we want for our dogs to also have all the good things like exercise and socialization, because socialization and exercise makes for really good canine citizens as well. So that's what we're aiming for here. It will make them better, all of our dogs better, whether they're in the park or not in the park, and make them happier. and make them happier and healthier as well as the people. Now, there are a lot of smart people here on the city council and that work at the city. And you've managed to handle the liabilities and risk issues for the kids. So, I'm confident that it can be done for the dogs as well. And of course, we're all willing to help if we can have this one dot, one park of all the parks in the city available when it's not used for other purposes for off-leash dogs. And I really hope that you'll pass this as well. The city's going to reap benefits from doing so. You'll be decriminalizing an activity that is a primary use of the park already. It'd be creating good canine citizens and of course, implementing your own master plan. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions?
Bill?
I want to go to Tom first because he had a question earlier.
I was just going to follow up on, on something that Gary said. He, he talked about citing people with dogs that are off-leash in other parts of the town. And I, and I've, I heard a couple of people make comments about enforcement or lack of enforcement. And I think it does create some confusion in Moscow when, when we see, you know, dogs off the leash and the police don't do anything about it. And I, I, I'm confused by it. But I do know that in Moscow, we have a, you know, a complaint-only enforcement of rules like this. So, if a person does not call it in, it doesn't get enforced. And so, that's, I think, a condition of what should be added to what Gary said. I've seen all sorts of situations where dogs are off-leash or cars are parked illegally and police officers go by and they're not actively, you know, enforcing those kinds of rules. And so, I, I think that it's important to recognize that sometimes it takes a, a phone call into the city to see some of these things enforced. So, I, I think that that's an important thing to, to point out.
Walter, you hit your hand up too.
Yes, thank you. Question for staff and I'm not sure who to direct it to and by that, chief, I'm, I'm including you and the staff. Is licensing dogs in the city code?
Yes, it is.
So, we currently require it? And I understand though that a very small percentage of Moscow's dogs, and I would, having door knocked in this town several times, I will assure you it's higher than forty-seven percent households that have dogs. And very few that only have one. But I understand that a very small percentage of those dogs are licensed. For Dwight, you've got these general rules regarding an off-leash area in Mountain View Park that you've proposed. Are those ru, do those rules need to be in the city code or, because I don't think they all are?
Well, I, I can't answer the nature.
And if they're not, are they enforceable?
This, this all went through the police chief. Matter of fact, we did make several changes because of unenforceability and some things. And this was reviewed by both the prosecutor and the police chief and felt that this was a good compromise with the codes as well as enforceability and understandability by the citizens.
So, this is part of the ordinance that we're changing?
Well, we don't address this specifically in the ordinance. We, we, we just have the rules, I think we say you have to go by the rules, the general rules that are posted.
Rod, let's get a question from Rod, he's our attorney. Rod, would you comment on that, please?
Yes, um, thank you, your honor. If somebody is violating these rules, they can always be trespassed from the park. And then if they come back, then they could, it could be enforced that they wouldn't, at that point, they could be cited. Some of these are actually in our code. It is required that their dogs be licensed and vaccinated in our code. Some of the problem is, is the enforcement issues on, you know, dealing with dogs. The only problem is when they get out of the park area, the designated party, then they're violating, clear violation of the city code. And then file a complaint and enforcement will happen.
Okay, John had a question, Dan, do John?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Wayne?
I'll start off by saying that I'm going to vote for this. But boy, do I have some doubts. Couple of things is, my question is, can, can dogs and people coexist in this park? Because this is a people park first and it's a dog park second. And it really scares me to think about a thousand dogs in that park at any given time. I was, I mean, I'm even concerned about a hundred dogs. I'm not worried about the folks that are here tonight and their dogs. I know that they're going to be well taken care of. But once this goes virile, once it goes public, it's those other dogs that are not well-trained, that are not maintained and people are just bringing them to the park and letting them have a good time. The other thing that I'm concerned about is all the discussion about self-policing. You cannot be vigilantes. That's not your job. And I can see some confrontations coming up. So, I'm in favor of it and when it comes time, I'm going to vote for it. But bearing in mind that this can go away just as fast as it happened. They, they have to coexist. And if, if little kids want to go out there and play, if somebody wants to go out there and fly a model airplane, that has to be allowed to happen also because this is not a dog park. This is a park for the people. Lastly, I think it's a shame that dogs can't be just let loose, period. Too bad they can't be so well-behaved that we can do that. Last night, I went for a walk up around, park up at, not Rotary Park, but, uh, Lyle. Yeah, Rotary Park, right. And here's a young gal out there, she's got her Labrador off a leash and she's throwing a stick. And they were just having a good time and I thought that was just great. There was no problem with that at all. But it's like somebody said, all it takes is one bite, all it takes is one very aggressive dog that attacked my wife's chit-sue in Mountain View Park. That's going to ruin it for everybody. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Arthur, I haven't heard from you yet.
It's pretty obvious from the comments that have been made that there really is a need for an off-leash area. It's good for the dogs, it's good for the people. And the current dog park is so overused due to its popularity that there needs to be some relief provided here. And I think that Mountain View is a good spot to do it. I don't think it particularly needs to be fenced, the creek makes a nice boundary. I think owners need to take responsibility for their dogs. And although I don't think other dog owners who are out there using the facility need to be the police, they can engage in self-monitoring and discussions and setting a good example for others. And if you're the only person out there with a badly behaving dog, it's going to become readily apparent and there's going to be eyes looking at you and, and social pressure can have its way. There are dogs running loose everywhere. It was pointed out that people are out using Lola Clyde Park, probably because they don't know it's a park because it's not posted as such and leaving behind all kinds of messes. And that's possibly because his people don't know that it's a park, they just think it's a big empty field. So, I think with the posting of the rules, the self-regulation, self-monitoring that goes on, people setting good examples, I think it really does provide a way to help with the quality of life all the way through Moscow, people and dogs. And as Wayne has pointed out, this can go away quickly if there are a lot of issues and public safety becomes an issue too, so it can also go away. So, I'm in favor of it and let's give it a go and see what happens.
Dan? I haven't heard from you yet. You know? Bill, I'll come to you, Tom.
I, I agree that, you know, nobody in here is, is the problem or the potential problem. But, you know, I also know that there are people that don't clean up after their dogs. Thankfully, my wife does clean up after our dog and, and she takes him on walks. That's, that was one of the stipulations that she would, so. But, you know, like I say, I have a dog, I like the little bugger and, but like Wayne said, you know, this could, this could go away as fast as it, as we put it forward, should, should we decide to pass it. I'm, I'm pretty hesitant about it, but, you know, I guess we can give it a go and, and, you know, the Parks and Rec Commission recommended it. So, you know, I'm in favor of giving it a try.
Tom?
Well, like, like others, I am also with concern and with some hesitancy, but will support this. It starts with the, you know, anything that starts with the letter P we hear about. And this is a triple whammy, it's parks, pets, and poop. And we're going to hear about it no matter what we, what it, what we do.
No pavement and potholes in this.
Pavement, no, no pavement and potholes. And that's only because we just fixed the parking lot over there. Give them, that's three more Ps.
Three more Ps.
We, you know, I've had all sorts of experiences with people with dogs in Moscow. And I've witnessed people with their dogs, both on the leash and off the leash, not cleaning up after the dog. And, and I've actually talked to people in both of those situations or in both of those categories of situations. And the most recent one was on Friday when I was on my way downtown to pick up cigarette butts from the cracks in downtown sidewalks, which was a whole nother joy and I can talk about that later, but.
No, you're not.
Because since then, I've asked two people that threw their cigarette butts on the ground to please pick them up. And it was like they just woke up, that suddenly somebody asked them to pick up their cigarettes and they couldn't believe that somebody, one, did that and secondly, that it was actually witnessed, I think. But the other day, when I was on my way down, I, I asked the woman that I saw that was kind of trying to ignore her dog that was leaving a prize along the trail over by Berman Creekside Park. And I said, do you need a bag for that? And she kind of said, no, I have a bag. And then she responded and said, what are you, the poo-poo patrol?
To me, you were.
To me, to me, yeah. And I said, well, I guess so. I've been elected to that role twice now and I think that that's pretty much what I do. And I introduced myself and then she quickly asked, well, where was it? Where, where was it? Where, and I, you know, was unfortunate, I thought it was unfortunate that she actually did not observe where it was. So, I had to point over in the general direction. But people do see these things. And I think for the most part in Moscow, people are quiet about it and they don't call it in and they don't, you know, they try to go about their way. I've, I think it was Wayne that mentioned that he saw somebody with their dog off the leash in one park. I've seen them in parks all over the city, so I know that it's, it's happening everywhere. It happens along the sidewalks. I mean, it, it's in a lot of different places and, and that's why, you know, I, I think that it'll be interesting to see this happen or see how this works. Maybe it will be a pressure release valve and will actually help make things better. I don't know. But I'm willing to give it a shot. I, I think that, you know, one thing about this job is we have to give things a try sometimes and sometimes we have to disagree with ourselves and just give it a shot. So, I'm willing to support it.
Walter?
Is picking up after your dog in city ordinance?
It is, your honor. I mean, yes, it is.
I'm sorry?
It is. Correct.
Two, two points I'd like to make, I'm going to vote for this also and I may not even have as much hesitancy as some of the other council members have indicated. I would certainly have no hesitancy to reverse it should occasion require it. I would encourage the lady who spoke about dogs coming up to her house to have the police department on quick dial and expect them to come up there and, and enforce it. And chief, I see your hand and if you'd like to come, comment to that when I get through here, I'd encourage you to do so. And then, secondly, I would like to think that by opening up Mountain View Park Field as an off-leash area, that we put forward effort to not have off-leash dogs in the other parks in the community. That people be told, not here, take them up there. And, and attempt to do that. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm talking to the chief when I said that as well. Yes, sir?
Just want to add, as a point of clarification, the east side of the park is the city limits. So, any dog that goes into the field east of there is actually in the county. So, you're going to have quick dial, it needs to be with the county sheriff.
I was presuming her house was in the city. And they don't subscribe to what it is.
Know her house well, but it is in the city, which is a quadrant for us as far as enforcement. But one kudo I want to mention is the reason this is here is because our code enforcement officer started enforcing off-leash. And that brought this here to us. So, you can blame me for this position.
No, we can thank you for it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Wayne?
Thanks, Dave.
We ready for a motion? John, you have, did you want to?
Make it, he wanted to make a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion then, that we approve designating the.
Wayne, go ahead, continue.
Make a motion that we approve designating the field area of Mountain View Park as an off-leash area except when the city has activities on the field or when the field is posted closed by the city. All other existing rules will apply per city code.
I second it.
That's it.
Okay, we got a motion by Wayne, which is, Stephanie, you, you got that? And it was seconded by Arthur, discussion? I'll start with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, it passes six to zero, so you have got a off-leash. Thank you very much, folks, for being patient.
Not, not done yet.
Oh, you got something else you want to do?
We don't do the second half, it's still not going to happen. So, the applause might have been a little early here. I may also make a motion that we change the city of Moscow ordinance Title X, Chapter V. Leash law is specified in the draft ordinance document under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and it be read by title and published by summary.
I second that one.
Well, I think Walter beat you to the punch on the second. But Wayne made a motion to spend three rules. B, you got that, Steph?
Who was the secretary then? It was Walter.
Walter was the second. Any question before I call for a roll? I'll start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, that's six to zero too, so. Now, one more thing before it is final, folks, and I have to read this thing off here. So, it's ordinance twenty-fourteen dash?
Four.
Four. Okay.
No, those nine.
Here goes folks. An ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow city code Title X, Chapter V, to provide a definition for dog park, to provide a definition of an off-leash area and to provide an exception to the leash law for designated off-leash areas within the city, providing that provisions of this ordinance may be deemed severable and providing that this ordinance will be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. So, there you have it. Gary?
I would note for legality purposes, till it is published according to law, it is not in force. So, you need to wait until you see it in the paper.
Which will happen tomorrow. I see a few reporters out there, so I'm guessing.
No, no, the ordinance has to be published.
Legal, public.
Saturday, it will be published.
Okay. There we have it. Be good to go, thank you folks very much. Dwight, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to go with reports and we will start with Tom at Admin.
Well, we had everything at the last admin meeting covered here tonight.
Okay.
So, we're good with that. And I had a Fair and Affordable Housing Commission meeting this past week, but there was a lack of quorum, so that meeting never actually even happened. So, but we heard a little bit of the excitement that's coming forward when Ken spoke about the work they're doing with the Human Rights Commission.
Okay. Okay, Dan, I'm going to refer to you for Public Works and Finance.
Yeah, again, we, everything that we talked about was, happened at this meeting or happened tonight on our agenda. And I don't believe I had any other meetings. All my stuff happens after this one, so.
Okay.
Got no other reports.
John, I'll go to you next.
My meetings were covered at the last meeting and. My meetings were covered at the last meeting, and starting next week, we'll go for another round, so I have nothing.
All right. Art?
I'm in the same boat. All my meetings start happening next week again.
This is making it easy, nice.
No, I had one.
Wayne had one, okay.
Historical Preservation Commission met on the 24th, and they're still moving ahead. The presentation and discussion for the next Preservation Moscow Historical Paper. It's going to have a lot of discussion on the Fort Russell District right now, because they're looking at expanding the Fort Russell District. And there's quite a bit of time and some very professional efforts being put into that. So that's going to be pretty good. But then another thing that's fairly exciting for the City of Moscow is that for 2015, Moscow was selected as the host city for the Fall 2015 Idaho Heritage Conference, which will bring 100 to 200 people to Moscow, so.
Walter, welcome back.
Thank you very much.
And I'm going to go to Walter.
And don't, don't think that I wasn't working while I was gone. I have already sent Dwight a photograph of a dog park in Budapest, Hungary, in the middle of downtown. And the one thing in it that I think might be something to look into is the fact that it was covered in pea gravel, which meant that you may be able, if you wish to do that, look into the cost of it, get away from the muddy mess that's at the current dog park that I keep hearing about. Just something to think about. I've also got some photos for less regarding parking in tree loans somewhere, because they got nowhere else to park, apparently. And then some things for Tim Davis regarding some downtown recycling, which appeared to be done underground, with the exception of some vault openings in the sidewalk, which is kind of interesting. So I'm like Tom, when we, when we travel, we just can't help but look at this stuff. But I didn't take, I guess I did take a few pictures of coats and garbage cans.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way to do it.
Thank you, Walter, and welcome back. Now, Art, you had one thing you had.
Backup beepers. Sustainable Environment Commission is sponsoring a movie called Trashed, which will be at the Kenworthy this Monday at 7:00. It's about the fate of solid waste. And so in addition to the Earth Day Awards and efforts in that respect, we have a movie coming up.
Okay. Two events that I wanted to comment about was a community walk, which was on April 26th. We heard about that earlier from Ken Founser, our Human Rights Task Force Chair. And that was a wonderful walk, 260-plus people, and Mary Beth Staben was with me through that. That was a very nice event. Tom was there as well. I don't know if you were, were you there, too, Walter? Or Arthur, I mean? No. So anyway, it was a very, very nice event. And then, last Friday, folks, we had a downtown cleanup with employees and a number of council peoples as well, and I was there. And that was a fun event that was on Friday the 2nd. We had a good time with them. Gary, how about you? You got any reports you want to?
Yes, sir. And I do want to say that those years of sweeping the Safeway store, the mayor did a heck of a job sweeping sidewalk.
Let me tell you what I can do, any miracles with a broom, except fly around on one. So how's that?
Also wanted to remind the council that we do have, on Friday at noon, we are having our annual Public Service Recognition Week barbecue, and you're all invited to join the employees for a barbecue. And then on Wednesday, we have our City-University School District meeting, or not meeting, breakfast. So that will be at the Quiet Room at the Wallace Complex at 7:00 AM on Wednesday.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
I would entertain a motion here.
Made.
Seconded by Tom. All in favor, you say aye? We're out of here, folks. Thank you very much.